We are recording.
All right, it is Monday, October 19th, 2020. We do have a full quorum of the board. All members are president, present, and I will call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. First agenda item, sort of sad, not sort of, very sad news. As we all know, we lost a very dear friend in Carmen, John Carmen, who was with the mud. I don't know exactly, guys, you know, the timeframe, but John was a great general manager for us, very caring individual, someone who personally I know for myself and maybe a couple, maybe Mark and Kelly, helped us transition when we came on the board, was always there and willing to help. So if we could, I'd like to just take a moment of silence in honor of John Carmen. Thank you. Godspeed, Carmen. Uh, I think I'm turning it over to Director Wilson.
Okay. Oh, let me get to the agenda. Give me a second here.
It says something about a 20-minute outgoing speech.
That's a negative. That is a negative. I really, I don't have a speech. It's been real. It's been fun. A lot of great things have been done. When we were blessed with opportunity to join the board, there were some challenges within the mud and we're able to address them. We walked in, we had an area spiel investigation with TCEQ that we were trying to navigate. We had a rate appeal that we were trying to get taken care of. The financial condition of the mud was less than ideal with a very low reserve amount. And there was a fourth issue. I can't recall. We were also in a wastewater treatment plant. That, so there were a number of challenges, you know, many. No one expected us to be able to conquer many of those, but we were, I was fortunate with the help of Bill Rose to be able to, to address many of those in our first two-year term. And the mud has gone from being an organization that was discussed frequently and held in not very good light four years ago to where there's rarely a peep about the mud. So, so I'm, I'm very happy about that. We have a great staff. They hung in through some difficult times and performed well. Through some very difficult times we've had, where we haven't had GMs and they stepped up and they, and they did the work that needed to be done and performed admirably. So it's been a real pleasure to work with all of you. Everyone knows I give Tony a ton of grief, but you know, one of the best decisions the mud ever made was bringing him on to become our council. He's done a great job shooting straight and narrow and telling us what we need to know to make sure we're protecting the interests of the district, and I always appreciate that.
Greg, that means a lot to me, and thank you. I've really enjoyed working with you, and I'll miss you. Actually, I enjoy the comments that I get from you, but I hope we get to work together even when you're over at the town. So thank you for your service.
Final comment would be, thank you, staff, for all the great work you guys have done, you guys and ladies have done and will continue to do.
Well, on my behalf, Greg, I appreciate all the leadership of yourself, and then I want to include Bill Rose in that too. As you mentioned, you know, when we came on board, Mark and Kelly and I, it was, it was a mess, which was actually one of the reasons why I wanted to come on the mud board, and it was with your direction and Bill's, and I think we've developed a very solid team, a great team. We'll miss you, but you'll, we know that you've got, you're going to do great work at the council because they're maybe in a little bit different position than kind of we are. So as a citizen taking off my mud hat, I look forward to you being on council and doing great work there.
Greg, we had a lot of challenges along the way, and it's been, it's been great working with you on those challenges. And as you, you discussed those, and there were quite frankly, many more that we overcame along the way. Issues that were worked and resolved, I think, to the best advantage to the, to our customers. I too want to wish you the best of luck on the town council, realizing that it's going to definitely increase your amount of meeting time. Perhaps you can work on cutting that back a little bit over there and
It is the plan.
And with your, with your strong knowledge now of the mud and the issues that we might have in the future, I look forward to setting across the table from you and working on some of that stuff while you're on town council.
I think some of the work we did in July will make those conversations a whole lot easier. Best wishes and good luck over there.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Greg, I just want to say it's been so pleasurable working alongside of you for this past two and a half years, two years. You are so knowledgeable, and I'm grateful that I've had this time with you and looking forward to what you can bring to council.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks again, Greg. Let's move on, citizens' comments. An opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. You may speak up to four minutes for the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori, do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
Okay. Moving on to staff reports and updates, you see the staff reports A through D. I'll throw it open to anybody on the board. Questions regarding staff reports that can be directed to staff?
Steve, if I may, I'd like to add a quick note. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we received notice today that we're going to be able to get the crane testing done on the 3rd of November. Is that correct?
Yes, so far that is the tentative date set.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments about staff reports? All right, if not, let's move on to consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. The discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I would like to remove one item and discuss it separately, and that is a Lori item B, September 21st, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Does anybody else have any item they would like to remove? If not, I'll entertain a motion on items A, C, and D.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda items Alpha, Charlie, and Delta, A, C, and D.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Director Wilson moved, Kelly seconded, consent agenda items A, C, and D. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, let's go back to item B. In looking at the notes on item B, and this is the September 21st regular meeting minutes. I'm looking at, and we can follow on page 119 here if you're in the deck, but there was a motion made, and this was halfway down. Motion made by Director Wilson and seconded by Director, I don't know who that director was that seconded it. The item that I'm talking about is order number 2020-921A as an apple on the consent agenda. So two issues. I'm not sure who the second was, but also if you look down below, I think my name was omitted on approving that. It was four to one vote with Director Rose abstaining. So if we can make those couple minor adjustments. Lori, you're muted.
Okay. Oh, I did. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. So I, go ahead, Bill Rose. You're muted, Bill.
I think the, I think the action of take, probably take it this time is to go ahead and just table, just take these off, bring them back next time, because Lori will probably have to review the tape and see who made the motion, or maybe the video.
Okay. All right, so we'll table this item, and Lori, let's bring that back just to approve. Next month, all we have to do is put the director who seconded that, and then add my name from approved.
Sure.
Next item, regular session. Item three, discuss, discussion of possible action regarding request for billing adjustment by the resident at 519 Indian Creek Drive. To start off, I'm going to turn this over to staff, Alan and/or Mike.
Let me get my document pulled up here real quick. Okay, so back in early May or mid-May, staff received a phone call, I guess from a customer, the customer at 519 Indian Creek complaining about their high bill. Our staff went out, recollected the meter data and verified everything. I've provided this synopsis or timing of events as part of the staff report. Has anybody, has everybody seen that and read through that?
Yes, thank you. Very helpful.
Do you need me to reread all of this information? Okay.
I don't know. Anybody else? I see heads nodding. Okay.
So the main thing that we wanted to talk about was providing the opportunity, when I talked to the resident, we had informed them of all the information we had found and the steps that we had gone through to try to find any potential issues with the meter itself, anything within our system of reading, and also making sure that everything was copacetic. We found no issues. We communicated this with the customer two separate times. I called and reached out to him, talked to him about everything that we found, all the findings, let him know that we had seen some increases since that bill itself. At the time when he communicated with me, he was more concerned about getting reimbursement for the bill that he had received in May. At that time, he was making mention of going a different route as far as communicating his feelings, and I told him that this board was the best way to handle any questions he had or requesting any potential reduction on his bill. So that's why this item is here tonight. We reached out to him, Lori, I believe she left two different voicemails, sent an email to him, and let him know that this would be on the agenda and requested him to notify her so he could speak. And to my knowledge, he has not done so. Correct, Lori? That's correct. Okay. So it's open for you, board, if you want to do anything with this, if you want to talk about it any further, if we want to let it lie, then we're just brought it to your attention, letting you know what we've done and any kind of future actions that we need to take.
Mark and Bill.
Yeah, I think everybody got a copy. I re-requested those graphs to be normalized as far as the volume on the vertical to actually be able to compare apples to apples, because with the variable scale, it kind of hid things. Because if you go down past that May point, this customer has gotten other periods of time where he has gone quite a bit over. In fact, he's got one over there that if I'm reading it right, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, back in the August 26th to September 24th, he had two different instances where he went to over 7,000 gallons. It's like he had a tremendous amount of usage on two days. Now, you know, to me, that doesn't sound like a broken meter. I mean, not if all the things around it are normal. That sounds like something's going on at his household. It's not, you know, it's not just that one instance. Almost looks to me like he went on vacation or something that May timeframe, left something running.
Mark, did, did I see your hand waving, Mark, or did, or was that something else? Or Mike, I'm sorry. Mike?
Yeah, I'll just add something real quick. So during this time that Mark was just talking about, that's actually a different meter in there too, because we pulled his, replaced it, sent it in to get tested. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that also.
Okay. Yeah, makes a big difference.
Bill, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes, I did correspond, or not correspond, I did have discussion with the owner of the property about this particular issue. And I did ask, I, I had a copy or obtained a copy of his data log for that particular month. And what it showed was a basically a consistent usage, I can, I could brag it out here, maybe share it, but basically showed a consistent usage in every 10-minute increment throughout a several-day period in length. And so I spoke with him about this, and this, to, to give you an idea, this gentleman lives up on basically near the top, if not the top of the hill on Indian Creek and Trophy Wood Drive, high, right near the highest point in our system. That area is known to have a lower water pressure due to its elevation. What this gentleman had done from my discussions with him is he had purchased a reservoir pressurization type system for use in his house. And what that system does is, and I'm going to use some numbers, and therefore they're not the accurate numbers, just to give you an idea. So let's say we have a line pressure there at 40 PSI. So his system takes that, takes the water from the line and pulls it through a pump and pressurizes it into a tank at another value. And so just down, just down to numbers, let's say that value is from 45 to 70 PSI. Now, you have the line, you have a check valve to prevent the water from going back in the main line, and a pump that puts it into the tank, and then he takes it then back out of the tank into his house. What happened, as he had relayed to me, is he'd been out in the garage and he noticed that this pump was running. And, you know, I'd go back out later, and, and this pump was running. Pretty soon, he got the impression that this run, pump was running a lot. So he called a technician to come out and take a look at it because he knew that wasn't normal. What the technician discovered is that the backflow valve had failed, and so what was going on was he was sucking water out of the line at 40 PSI, putting it into the tank up 70, 75 PSI. Pump's going to turn off, so then, then the water goes back out of the tank, back into our line, because the check valve isn't restricting it anymore. Pressure goes down in his tank, down to 40 PSI, 45 PSI, the pump comes on, fills the tank back up, pressurizes it, shuts off. So he get this cycle that's going on. He, he told me that he also had a, a very large electric bill to match up with his very large water bill. So based on what I've been able to determine from that, that discussion, I don't think we, we may have sold him the water going one way, but he turned around and gave it back to us out in the line, and then, and then turned around to it right back out. It was a, it was moving about, I could pull it back up and look at it, let's say 150 gallons every 10 minutes. So I don't know how large his system was, but based on that, I, I have a motion, and my motion is I move to set the consumption for, let's see what his address is, 519 Indian Creek or 042020 at 6,000 gallons and credit the account accordingly.
So that I understand your motion, Bill, you're saying to set the rate at 6,000, right? And Bill, Mike, go ahead.
I'll, I'll let you guys work it out, but
I think we need a, a second.
Yeah. All right. So we heard Bill's motion effectively, at the end of the day, billing the customer for 6,000 gallons. Do we have a second on that motion that we can discuss?
I, I'm not sure about that figure, because the chart I'm looking at shows that his use was just a little over 3,000 at its maximum on the revamped scale.
Mark, you would need to second it, then we can discuss it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so let's, now that it's seconded, we can open it up for discussion. So Mark, the proposal from Bill was 6,000. Go ahead.
Well, I'm looking at the graphs normalized. That's why I asked, because the moving scale kind of made things look weird. The normalized scale says he just did a little over 3,000 gallons per day during that period where it got excessive. Yeah, Bill, sorry.
The reason I picked 6,000 is I looked, I, I didn't look at, use the charts you're looking at. I used the chart on page 140, which shows his usage for the year.
Mike? I'll just add my two cents. I've been around meters a lot, a lot of years, and if he was even pumping water back into us, that meter would be reading that water backwards. So if you, if you literally take a meter and you run a water backwards through it, it will take that meter number reading and reverse it to a lower reading, just like you're running it through forwards. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
It will.
So Bill, I want to go back to your point, because you, you called up slide 140. It looks to me, if I'm reading it correctly, dating back to October a year ago, 19, through September of this year, it looks like the average is what? Somewhere around five or six, 5,000 gallons? You got 5, 4, 7. So why six? Six seems to be on the high end to me.
I just put it in there. I put it in there with the ones that were adjacent, the, the 6,000. I mean, if the board wants to, you know, we have, we have to consider Mike's input. I, that was a question I had, if the meter would run backwards or not, and if it did, if it would be accurate. So I knew meters were tested one way. I don't know how they, how they function the other way. So, and I can't, and I can't speak to that. So, and like I say, you know, the board, the board can pick a different number if they want to pick a different number, or they can say, look, our meters don't, our meters read accurately going backwards, and we think that this is where it should be. So that'd be a board decision.
So if what Mike is saying is true, the fact if Bill's contention is the water would go, would go up, he'd pump it forward, it would depressurize, it flow back through because the check valve failed, then what Mike is saying, it would go, it would go up to eight, as it went back through, it'd go back down to five, then it'd go back to eight, back down to five. So ultimately, it would net out to zero, and ultimately, he would finally be charged for the actual water consumed or used. Did I understand you correctly, Mike?
That is correct.
So let me weigh in here on just my overall thoughts. I've been as involved.
Steve, can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Because I know the way our policy is written is if you have an issue with water consumption and you have a repair, and you can demonstrate that repair, and you send us a repair bill, and that fixes your, that corrects the issue, then our policy has been we would set your water rate at whatever the winter average was. We would, we would, we would basically correct the issue. Did he provide us with a, a plumbing bill where that, where that issue you described bill was corrected?
So one thing I'd like to clarify, the only thing that our rate order states is that we can make or will adjust the wastewater sewer averaging, if they provide documentation showing of any repairs made. Our rate order states that there is no decrease in water billing, period. Now, as the Board of Directors, you do have the ability to adjust as you all see fit, but the only thing adjustment related is for the wastewater sewer averaging. But you are correct, Greg.
Yeah, so, so here's, again, I, I've been involved in this one as Bill has probably from the beginning. In fact, I was out there when they replaced the meters. I've had many conversations with, with the customer, the neighbor. We have given them ample opportunity to come forward, as recently as last week, where Lori has sent out emails and voicemails, one or two voicemails, encouraging, imploring, and I think Alan has had several conversations as well, talking about the process that we are here in right now. And the fact that the owner hasn't chosen to at least provide the board with some side of their side of the story, I guess I'm struggling with that, because we do have a process out there, and the owner has chosen not to discuss it with this board directly. So I'm not an advocate necessarily, I'll weigh in with the rest of the, the board, but I'm not an advocate of doing anything at this point.
Did, did he provide a bill where, so nothing, he has not provided a bill where any modification, where any plumbing-related repairs have been made?
No, sir. Last time I spoke with him, I'd, it'd be the second or third time I've mentioned that to him, that anything that he could provide to the board as far as documentation or reasoning or a mistake that could have happened on his property would be in his favor to the board, but I have not seen or heard of any of this information.
Okay.
He told me that they did not have a leak. He was adamant that they did not have a leak, never found a leak.
Any other discussion, because we have a motion on the table that we need to act on? All right, so let me recap what, Bill, I think your motion was that was seconded. All right, so let me recap what Bill, I think your motion was that was seconded by Vice President Chapman. And that was to adjust the homeowner's bill to six thousand gallons. Is that the number you threw out?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So that is the motion on the table. It was seconded by Vice President Chapman. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. So we will have no action on this. There's the motion did not pass. Okay, moving on, we are now up to agenda item five. Consider or take appropriate action to resume in or in person Board of Director meetings beginning November sixteenth twenty twenty in the Sow
We're on four. Agenda number
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Bill. Good call. Four, consider an act to approve contract number twenty twenty zero one zero one nine zero one for electrical and SCADA updates to lift stations seven, eight, nine as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty capital improvements project and authorize general manager to execute necessary contract documents. Alan, do you want to give commentary to this?
Mark, do you have anything?
I'll go ahead and take this one. So in fiscal year twenty nineteen, we started our lift station upgrades. It's upgrading, you know, our SCADA panels and everything. Basically, they're like a computer, you know, most of them are about ten years old at least. Some of them are a lot older. So we started this upgrade. Also with these upgrades, we have our new generator. So all of them are getting the standard diodes plug. So we can go pull our generators to all of them and just plug them in if, you know, with a power outage or whatever and keep the lift stations running. So we started this in fiscal year nineteen. I didn't get it through till fiscal year twenty twenty. I even went out for bids and only received two bids. The other one was still unresponsive. So we're just looking to keep continuing down this path of upgrading our lift stations.
Okay, Bill?
I move to approve contract number two zero two zero one zero one nine zero one for electrical and SCADA upgrades to lift stations seven, eight, and nine to DHS Automation Incorporated in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kelly seconded. So Bill, your motion was as written in number item number four, but with a not to exceed amount of forty-seven five hundred. Is that correct?
Forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. That motion was seconded by Secretary of Treasury Castingsay.
And if I I may have failed to include and authorize the general general manager to execute the necessary contract documents.
Okay, so you have the motion in front of us. The not to exceed forty-seven five eighty. And also to authorize the general manager to execute the documents.
That was Do you accept that addition? That modification?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Greg. So we have the modification that Kelly has been approved, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, show your hands. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're on to item five, consider take appropriate action to resume in-person Board of Director meetings beginning November sixteenth twenty twenty in the Sower Municipal Building.
I'd like to make a motion to resume in-person Board of Director meetings beginning November sixteenth twenty twenty in the Sower Municipal Boardroom.
Okay. Mark, you seconded. Okay. So Kelly has moved to resume Board of Director meetings beginning November sixteenth twenty twenty in the municipal building, seconded by Vice President Chapman. Discussion. Mr. Rose?
I'd like to know what relevant data data is being presented to support the motion.
I think there's no data. Every day, the mud building gets cleaned vigorously with the cleaning crew, and I think it's time for us to meet in person. We are, there is room for us to social distance at least six feet apart. And so it's just time to meet face to face again.
I would also, I would also add that. I mean, we know that there's still COVID issues out there. However, restaurants are open, bars are being opened up, almost all public places. Given that, given if you wear a mask and or social distance are being opened up. Our town council has been having in-person meetings for at least two months, maybe three. And I am an advocate as well of getting back provided that we do the right things, and that is making sure it's cleaned adequately before the meeting. We social distance, we spread out. And also in addition to that, if there are, that if, but we make sure that the seating area out for the audience is appropriately social distance with the chairs and whatnot. So that's that's my opinion. Bill, you had commentary?
Yes, I did. They are now well aware that the COVID travels, it's aerosolized, travels like smoke. So the being in a confined area is a point of concern. I did do a little research today on data. Went to the Denton County Public Health website to see exactly what the situation was in trophy. Not in the county or in the state. On September the twenty fifth, they changed or added to the way that they were putting forth data. Rather than just showing a cumulative number of cases, they started showing an active number and a cumulative number. On September the twenty fifth, Trophy Club had thirteen active cases. On the third of October, those had increased to eighteen. On the eighth of October, the active cases in Trophy Club was up to twenty-six. On the twelfth of October, the active cases were up to twenty-nine. On the fourteenth, we went to thirty-one. On the fifteenth, the thirty-four. On the sixteenth, the forty-two. And on the seventeenth, we are at forty-four active cases in Trophy Club. I don't think things are going the right way in Trophy Club. And I think we send the wrong message by returning to active meetings.
Okay. I will add one more point of commentary that I also just two weeks ago attended the Tarrant County County Commissioners Board Meeting in person. And there might, therefore, is probably fifty people in attendance at that meeting socially distanced. Given our history of very, very few people in person attending our meetings. It would be the board. It would be certainly key staff, everybody that's looking at this on Zoom and Tony. I think we can adequately and safely social distance to move forward. That's my my thoughts.
I agree one hundred percent with you.
Mark?
I understand Mr. Rose's concern, Director Rose's concern. And I have a question. Is it possible? Or let's say Mr. Rose is uncomfortable with coming to the Sower Building to attend. Can he attend via Zoom while the rest of us are in presence?
We have, yeah, we have the capability to do that. It's used when somebody can't, for example, make an in-person meeting. We remotely have brought them on board. Am I speaking of Alan? That can happen, correct?
That's what I've been told. Yes. We basically take a monitor and
Legally, we can do it. The different question would just be the technology to do we have it. But legally, the answer is yes for as long as the pandemic arises. Otherwise, we have to revert back to the normal open Meeting Act requirements where there's some and as you know, we've done this before. There's some video requirements where anybody in attendance has to see the face of the remote director, but during the pandemic, that would not apply.
So let me just ask a question. How how would that look? Would if we were in the meeting room and somebody remotely joins? They would join via Zoom and we would see them as we were sitting in the day in the dais and on the Zoom? Or how how would that work?
You would just see them on the TV. They're sitting in the middle. Where the presentation is normally presented or off to the right.
Okay.
We've done it a number of times before where someone was traveling and couldn't be at the meetings and they just called in via Zoom.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility here at the current time. If the board wanted to meet in person but have the public only attend remotely, we could structure the agenda that way. We could structure it as an in-person meeting where the public could be there in person. But allow for participation by a director remotely. There's different ways we can do it. It just depends what the board's trying to accomplish.
Does that kind of alleviate some of your concern about meeting?
Oh, my concern about meeting?
Yeah.
Are you going to wear masks? Of course. I might be able to attend.
Okay. Is there other commentary about the issue? Hearing none. The motion on the table, and this was Kelly put the motion forth. Vice President Chapman seconded, and that is to go back to meeting in person as the Board of Directors live beginning November sixteenth in the Sower Municipal Building. All those in favor, show your hands.
I'm sorry, one more comment. Just I apologize for interrupting. This is Tony. And to clarify, is that an in-person meeting for the public? Or not?
I'll tell you my interpretation, and maybe I'm wrong, but if we are going back to kind of back to the future, that would be in person to the public as well. With the caveat that the boardroom is set up with appropriate social distancing and mask wearing for people who are attending in person.
I don't think we can make anyone wear a mask. That's not the government has not mandated it. So you can't. I don't know if the mud can, can the mud require someone to wear a mask if it's not mandated by the governor?
Yes, we can. Not during voting. The governor's prohibited it, but otherwise we we have the right to mandate.
Okay, good.
Isn't it still the county order to wear a mask?
Yeah, that's a good point. I don't know what your local county
I believe it's still. I believe it is still Denton County's order to that you must wear a mask. However, we're not, we can't enforce it right now on the board, and you'll see we have that all blocked off. And masks are just strongly suggested via the governor's order. However, if you go into the other parts of our building, masks are required. And that is the the order in Denton County right now. But I'm my question is I can't remember if the ten-person limit is still in place. I'll have to look at that and see if there's still a ten-person limit because then we might have to seek out a exemption.
About this, why don't we structure the meeting so that those directors who want to attend in person may do so, those who don't can participate remotely. And we would also give flexibility to the public. Would that accomplish everybody's goals and address concerns of people who may not want to be there in person to give them options?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll work with Lori in preparing an agenda that kind of reflects that.
Okay. So again, we have a motion in front of us. I want to make sure, Tony, I'm capturing because there's going to be a couple of caveats to this, the the biggest of which is directors certainly will have the option of attending in person or remotely, as will the public. So is that the caveat to the motion of opening back on November sixteen?
I think that's just clarification of the motion that it'll be structured. So an in-person meeting may take place, but any directors or members of the public may also participate remotely if they so choose.
I don't necessarily think that has to be part of the motion because it's always been that way.
Okay. If no, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hands. And it looks like we have three. Greg, you're a no.
I'm abstaining because it won't really impact me.
I want to make sure I get captured that. So all those opposed, raise your hand. So we have three yeses. That was Flynn, Chapman, and Castingsay. We have Bill Rose opposed. And we have Director Wilson abstaining.
Actually, that's an interesting question, Greg. The next regular meeting would be November sixteenth.
I know I have to show up, call the meeting, and then I leave. So for all intents and purposes, I'm there. Amount of time I'm there is infinitesimal, at least small.
And I just bring this up in the context of the meeting. The board would anticipate canvassing the election at the six on the sixteenth. The seventeenth is the deadline to do so. Can we see in the election? Okay.
Okay, Lori, did we capture all of that?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, future agenda items. I know, Lori, we had something we were circling back with, and that was earlier bringing back the one
The minutes.
The minutes, correct?
Chapman with the comment.
Yep, Mark.
Yeah, I didn't want to bring it up while we were discussing the customers' bill. But Alan and I have been exchanging emails. The new meters we're putting in give the customers or will eventually give the customers the ability to monitor their usage on a daily basis. We continue every year to get this outrage, like every spring or whatever on the thing or about their bills being too large. I think the quote or the the estimation was about a million dollars, Alan, I think you said, to try and put the infrastructure in place.
Correct.
I'm I would like to put an agenda item to discuss advancing our schedule on putting the new meters in and this new infrastructure to give our customers the ability to monitor and hopefully prevent them calling us that we're cheating them or there's bugs in the system. You don't think so, Greg?
I don't think it's going to matter because for whatever reason, this is not just Trophy Club. It's Texas-wide where you just suddenly have these spikes in the bill. And if I see it going up day by day, or if I get the bill at the end of the month, you all still going to be a bunch of low-down dirty dogs.
Okay, I was just trying. I was just trying to
Not opposed to, I I think it's great to offer meters where people can make conscious decisions to adjust their uses to when it's more advantageous. So I'm not speaking against that. I think it's great if we can continue to offer that service to our customers. But I do not think it's going to reduce the number of people who complain about it on Facebook.
Well, the the other point, and I want to mention, was anybody aware that the meters had a flag that if the usage is constant or what is it?
Bill?
You're having a discussion on an item under future meetings.
Yeah.
Not on the agenda.
All we're asking about is that does this want to be an agenda item for the future? That's that was the suggestion.
Yes, that's what I'd like.
Okay, I understand, Greg, your comments. Go ahead, Tony.
Oh, just for Lori. And also, can you add some items for the election, please?
Okay, so Mark, we're going to add that to the future agenda item for discussion. Bill, I'm sorry, Tony, did you say something about you want election?
Yeah, we'll have to include items at the very least to canvas the election returns. And depending on the status, if we can get the paperwork done, we could take action this wherein the whoever the whoever the new director will be.
Okay.
I'd like to sign up for citizen comments complaining about my water bill.
Denied. Okay.
Denied.
Well, see, the problem with that, Greg, is citizens' comments are at the beginning of the meeting, and so that might be a challenge. Just saying.
Yeah, you have to be on time for those.
That's kind of what I was getting at. That's kind of what I was getting at, Kelly. All righty then. Future meeting dates, item seven, last item, sorry. November 16th is our next meeting. It is, that is it, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:24, and this meeting is adjourned.